Good evening, everyone. We're going to be starting now, so everyone can take their seats. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole. It's Tuesday, November the 12th, 6:30 PM, and I'm going to be calling our meeting this evening to order. We're going to start with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Moving on to our land acknowledgement. The municipality of Port Hope exists on the lands of the Michisagik Anishinaabe traditional territory covered by the Williams Treaties. We honour and recognise First Peoples as rights holders and stewards of the lands and waters on which we have the privilege to live, work and play, including the Ganaraska forest and river. We pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. We commit to actions towards truth and reconciliation by recognising the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, strengthening ties with First Nations, Métis and Inuit peoples, especially those who make their home in Port Hope, and learning from indigenous ways of knowing and being. We do so by recognising the past and working towards a shared future. Moving on to our second item, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? I note that none were received prior to the meeting tonight, seeing none. Moving on to item number three, correspondence. Item 3.1, David Pacchini, MPP, Northumberland, Peterborough South, regarding potential future firefighter training in Northumberland County. I bring this forward to you. You've all had a chance to read it for information, and the recommended action is to receive this for information. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Or can I get it? Yes, councillor Les.
Since they're looking for a site, and do we still have any pull with Wesleyville, with the facility there? We used to have a training facility, and now the Ontario Government own that whole problem, opportunity?
I don't have all the details on that, councillor Les, but I do know that they have largely pulled away doing training exactly at that facility. I know OPG still does some training, but otherwise, no. I think it's early days. I think there's still going to be many conversations happening across the county with all the different chiefs, and I think they're going to be having many discussions among themselves of how they might want to take advantage of the finding opportunity that's being presented and in front of them.
I just found that Mr Pacchini's note was very vague as to what he wanted, anyways.
And I think that's why the chiefs are going to be having further conversations to try to dig into the details. So I just bring this forward to you for information. So that's the recommended motion on the table. Can I get a mover and seconder for that? Move by councillor Les, seconded by councillor Adam, all in favour. And that has passed unanimously. Moving on to item 3.2, the intermunicipal housing and homelessness task force meeting summary notes of October. Can I get our deputy mayor to speak to this?
Yeah, as usual, we always share them and elevate them to the agenda, just so interested colleagues and community members can follow the discussions and learning from that task course for anything that's relevant to us as a community.
Thank you very much. The recommended action is to receive then. As for information, can I get a mover and seconder? Moved by councillor Daryl, seconded by councillor Les, all in favour. And that has passed unanimously. Moving on to item number four, items for consideration, 4.1, Port Hope Public Library regarding revised 2025 budget presentation, and Bob Wallace will be coming forward to present. Welcome.
First of all, thank you very much for allowing us to come and speak to you with regard to the Port Hope Library budget for the upcoming year. I understand the deliberations that you're going through and the difficulty that you have. So, as you know, we were here a couple of weeks ago and presented our budget request. Our current budget is... Our current budget for '24 is $976,757, and our proposed budget for '2025 was $1.18327, for an increase of $131,000 over our 2024 budget. Included in the budget are several things, and that is an increase in staffing costs due to the new agreement with QP, increase in licensing for eBooks, quite an increase in our insurance premium, and increase for office equipment. So those are some of the increases that were in the budget that we presented here two weeks ago. To offset some of these unavoidable costs, the library proposed some modest decreases in books and training and further cuts would impact the ability of the library to main current services. So at our meeting when we were here a couple of weeks ago, we were asked to go back and look at budget increases of 5%, 7% and 9% compared to the 13% that we asked for. And they are shown on this table here. So if we are going to have a 9% increase in our budget instead of 13, we would need to find $56,400 somewhere in the budget to have simply a 9% increase. And all of these things would have a potential impact on services and/or resources at the library. So an example of something potentially could happen to get to 9% would be close the library hub, satellite library. So it's a potential thing, but that's an example of what we would need to do to find If we were to do a 7% budget increase instead of the 13, we would need to find $73,000 in our budget. And again, it would affect services, and what we would look at would be the hub branch potentially, and closing a weeknight here on Queen Street at our Mary J Benson facility. And the final one is if we were limited to a 5% increase in our budget, again, we would need to find $82,100 in the existing numbers, and that would potentially involve closing Sundays, as well as the other two options that I've talked about. So all told, these are potential impacts of services and resources that we can provide to the community, and this would be the potential result. Bottom line is, whatever the bottom number is that we end up with as a council approving for the library budget, we'll have to work within that number to manage the library services and our resources and our staff, whatever works out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over, and councillor Adam, I see, and then I've got councillor Les as well. So go ahead.
Thank you. And thanks, Bob, for coming in and doing this presentation. Just a quick question when it comes to the staffing costs. The $118,000, is that all from the changes of the QP, or is it also for hiring new staff? Just watch your button again there.
No new hiring, just changes due to the QP union agreement that we came to last summer.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Les.
You know, nobody likes to see the drastic cuts and the effect of these cuts on the library or any other department. We were thinking that one of the alternatives for the library was to cut out some of the extra programming that they provide, that perhaps other departments in the municipality, such as Parks and Rec, provide. And there seems to be duplication of that. And I'm thinking that maybe we should run the library as a library, as opposed to adding all these extra services that, you know, they're great in good times and we have money, but, you know, I'd rather see those services cut than the library closed for a night or a weeknight or whatever. Now, whether Canton can sustain itself with the low volumes up there, it's an awful elaborate service for very, very few people. So those are my comments, and I know that we or the director of finance would be happy to work with you in whatever way we can.
Councillor Daryl.
I just want to say thanks for going back and doing the work that we asked you to do. I was more in line with Les's thinking on services. At this time, I don't think it's a viable option to cut the hub branch, especially with the daycare coming on board. I think that's a little premature to look at that option. That's my comments on it.
So, again, it was just an example of how much, what covers that amount of money. So we would have to look at other things. Programming, certainly.
Just a couple of comments for me. Really appreciate you coming back and having a look at the budget. I think that this is an exercise that everybody's engaged in these days, going line by line and really seeing where the cost efficiencies can be found. So I don't think anybody is real keen on closing down the Canton hub. I think it's such an essential service for our W2 residents. But I do wonder, you know, going back to the discussion that we had last week, whether or not any of the kinds of programming that currently exists, or the needs around marketing, or, for example, space considerations and rethinking the space of the library, whether or not the marketing piece, for example, overlaps with something that is available through the municipality, and whether or not some of those other projects that were outlined for us might be able to be on pause for 12 months without actually getting at the core of the services that are so essential for the community, including the Canton hub locations. So I would very much like not to see the hub be part of whatever budget cuts are being proposed. And I, you know, I do want to actually follow up less with your point about Director Baxter, whether or not there might be an ability to work with your team if there's a willingness to see if there's a place for any kind of further consideration of the budget. And I don't know, Director Baxter, if that's something that your team would be willing to consider.
Certainly, if that's the want of council, I can certainly meet with the board members or the CEO and go over the library budget.
Deputy Mayor.
I mean, I appreciated where you were all coming from when this was sent back to the board for another look. Sharpen your pencils, it's a tough year, we all know that. But at this point, if the library board is telling us that in order to achieve this, they will have to reduce services, reduce service level in ways that significantly will impact people's access to and enjoyment of this municipal service, and that in so doing, the total impact to our taxpayers will be less than 1/3 of 1% of the tax levy. It just seems to me that we've done the exercise, we've done our due diligence, but at this point, the question for us really, I think, is, are we willing to reduce the services of the library? Because that is what the experts are telling us will need to happen if we do not approve the budget that they requested. So at what point do we accept that the pencils have been sharpened and everyone has done their best, but we say this is a valuable service to the community that must be preserved? And given that it makes such a negligible, I would argue, to the point where it will not be noticed by people at the bottom line of their property tax bill, I'm not sure that this is still a productive exercise to keep pushing this.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Okay, I think we've had a chat around the table, so would anybody like to make a motion of how you'd like to proceed on this? I see a mover.
I'd actually like to ask a question.
Sure. Yeah, just for process sake. So if the recommended action is to receive this for information, what would be coming forward to us at budget?
So your starting position would be what the library has submitted? Well, this is three high-level options, which may or may not include what's up on the screen, right? So the library is required to provide it, you know, to us in the format that we require, which is through our budgeting software, and that's what would be our starting part of the package.
Thank you, Director Baxter, for that clarification. Councillor Les.
I would like to send the library board back with a clear message and say that we're going to pick one of these three, and we don't want to do it on budget day. We'd like to give them some time to work with a 9% or a 7% or a 5% budget. So I think we should step up right now and make a decision on what we're going to send them back with, and so they know what money they're going to have to play with.
So having made that suggestion, would you like to drill down and make a motion?
None of them are very attractive, but if I hate the marginal dollar difference, I would say I'd be happy with either the 5% or the 7%.
Councillor Adam, and then back to the deputy mayor. Councillor Adam?
Thank you, and I appreciate it. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe the CAO can help me, but could we not just receive this for information and then on budget time, we decide how much money we are giving them? Like, do we really need to direct it back to them for anything?
If you just receive it for information, then essentially, staff would move forward with presenting the budget next Tuesday with what is currently in the FMW software. Preferably, staff would not want to next Tuesday be, you know, drilling down and making another decision on, you know, board budgets on top of the municipal operating and the municipal capital budgets. That's why we've asked for them to be presented in advance in order to streamline next Tuesday. That said, that is always council's prerogative, if you wish to renegotiate or redeliberate on the option next Tuesday. That said, there's the original option in FMW, you've been presented with three options here. If council isn't settled, then ultimately, you know, I think there's risk in arbitrarily choosing a number without understanding what the final risk is going to be. They've presented options, but you don't have the fundamental power to decide outside of the envelope, how that funding envelope is determined and what that impact is. You know, so essentially, if you're not settled, then perhaps going, if you don't want to receive it for information, getting the director to work with the CEO and the board, and then what is presented next Tuesday has went through yet another process, and it's looking, and maybe on Tuesday, we will feel more comfortable, so we're not renegotiating again on Tuesday, because then essentially, the board would have to come back. Just trying to provide a middle-of-the-road option.
I'm just going to jump in here before I pass it back to you, Deputy Mayor. Bob, I had one question. When you were presenting the three options, I noticed that you were careful about using the word "may" in terms of these three. So can I just push you a little further and ask? Could a 9% increase be realised without necessarily closing the Canton hub? Because I noticed that the one commonality between all these three options is putting on the table the closure of the library hub at Canton. Were there any options that were considered where a 9% increase would be presented without that being on the table?
The quick answer to that is yes. I think we could look at the overall line by line to find it, but the number that jumped out was almost exactly the budget for Canton, so that's why we use that as an example. But yes, I think we can work with the finance committee, and we can also work with, you know, duplication of marketing certainly is something we don't want to do. So I think the answer is yes.
Deputy Mayor.
I think my thought is, if we know that, you know, you can whittle down, but there's nothing else, there's no other line item that's going to give you a $50,000 savings, right? So you can whittle here and there, but it seems to me, even just by looking at the budget that you originally submitted, that there will be service cuts if you're held to this percentage increase. So I'm having a difficult time understanding how we can make a decision about something that will result in service cuts without looking at it within the context of the overall budget and the overall tax levy. Because we could make a decision here tonight, but we don't know what the increases or the service level changes or opportunities for savings will be when we look at all of the other departmental budgets. So I would really urge us to receive this for information, and then file this away, and then look at the budget in totality, and decide then whether we feel how the budget for the library and these services weigh against other ones that we'll be looking at next week.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other comments? Councillor Daryl.
I would like to agree with Claire on this, looking at it from a whole perspective. We asked you to come back, and you did, and the options, you come back without the certainty of keeping Canton intact, the options to me presented aren't viable. So we looked at what you presented, and it's not a viable... I'm trying to use the right words. The decrease we're trying to get you to is not a viable option, I don't think, in my opinion. So I would like to maybe see you come back at your 13.5, and we then deliberate on, once we see everything as a whole, and see if we can find the money to, somewhere to get the money. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Daryl. Councillor Les.
We can't direct you line by line, and nor do we want to. We don't have that knowledge. But I do want an expectation that if you want to wait till next Tuesday, and just, we're going to have the same conversation then as we're having now, and yeah, you may have more context to it, but I think Mr Wallace had said that they would like the opportunity of working with our finance people and determining if there are alternative savings rather than closing the hub that they can work their way through, and I'd like to give them that opportunity.
So councillor Les, is that something that you want? Or, I hear a hum coming over my left shoulder here. So does somebody want, are we prepared to put a motion on the table?
Not very good at motions.
Okay, well, then maybe I'll turn the chair over to the deputy mayor for a moment.
I assume, Mayor Elena, would you like to put a motion on the table?
I'd like to do this, just in the interest of not having this hold us up at our next budget deliberation discussions, I'd like to just put a motion on the table to have the library board work with the team in corporate, sorry, in finance, I'm seeing corporate services over there, and with Director Baxter, just to see whether or not there's any other cost efficiencies that can be realised from that budget, especially looking at things that may be still overlapping with what the municipality has on offer, and just to know that that exercise has been undertaken regardless of where it lands, but to know that that process happens so that we don't go around again in circles at our budget deliberations. So that is the motion that I would like to put on the table, is that you do work with Director Baxter and team just to review the budget one more time, understanding we are in a difficult budget year, and make sure that it is as sharp as it can be, and that we can rest assured that it went through yet another process, and it won't hold us up in this same discussion when we do have to make the decision. So that's my proposed motion. Does any... Oh, I'm not sharing, so.
I think we're looking to the clerk. Do you have that motion captured?
Just one moment, please, just one moment. Okay. So, I have a revised, like, I have a proposed motion from the mayor, just capturing what she has articulated. I'll attempt to read it out, and Madam Mayor, you can confirm whether it is, you know, fulfilling what it is that you want to put forward. That the presentation by Bob Wallace, Chair of the Port Hope Public Library Board regarding the Port Hope Library budget be received for information, and that the Port Hope Public Library CAO be directed to liaise with municipal staff in order to bring forward the library budget with cost efficiencies, that to engage with the library board to review their proposed 20... Actually, let's just do it this way. You can refer the presentation to the staff to engage with the library board to review their proposed 2025 budget for cost efficiency opportunities. Would that be, that might be the easier way to...
I think that that does reflect the spirit of what I'm proposing, yes.
Yeah, so that the, so the presentation would be referred to staff to engage with the library board to review their proposed 2025 budget for cost efficiency opportunities.
Yes. So moved by the mayor. Is there a seconder for this motion? Councillor Adam? Any further comment or discussion? And council? And I'll call the vote, all those in favour. Motion is carried.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. With regard to the motion, I think regardless of what our budget requests are, we should be doing that anyway, every time, so thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming and doing all the work. It's a very difficult budget year, and I know that everybody in the municipality, including every single department, has been going line by line three, four, five times, and so we find ourselves in this time, and thank you for your openness to that. Moving on to item number 4.2, George, Vice Chair of the Police Services Board regarding the 2025 budget presentation. Are you presenting alone, or are you having a co-presenter with you? Yes, absolutely. Welcome.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me tonight, and thank you for the rest of the team for honouring me with bringing the barrier of good news and the police budget. Obviously, we know and have heard the difficulties that everybody's going through, but we have worked very diligently and sharpened our pencils, as you have requested, to provide the best numbers that we can. So bear with me, this is my first time presenting in front of council, but I'm not shy of being in front of cameras, so I'll do my best. So as you know, our police services is located at 55 Fox Road. We have a great team over the years. I've been part of the police board for the past five years, and we've been combing through our staff and hiring an excellent chief that is here with us tonight as well. So I have to give lots of kudos and praise to the work that is being done on the back end there. Just a little information as well, we have 29 frontline officers right now, and we have minimised our officers that are in WSIB, so we're definitely maximising the employees working, okay? Yeah, that would help, that was the information there. So I just want to highlight some of the accomplishments that we accomplished in 2024. We have been able to recruit two more constables, brought in a part-timer as well, and obviously invested in disability specialists, and we have recruited, past couple of months, a payroll and benefit specialist. That was a position that was passed on from municipality to be under our umbrella, so that's one thing that has been recently added. One other highlight is the auxiliary program. It's been ongoing for the past three to four years. We have increased that up to seven members, and probably want to share that we had one member from the auxiliary program ranked up, and that was a constable. So that program is definitely working, and the investment that has been done over the years is paying off in retrospect there. And obviously, our auxiliary members, as you probably witnessed on Monday last night or yesterday, they were all present during the Rumors Day ceremony and added volume to our frontline officers. Obviously, you can see, there's a couple of other things that we have invested. Obviously, you can see there's a couple of other things that we have invested over the past year and we have delegated a lot of grants in order to providing adequate service to our municipality through policing. Couple improvements that we were forced with our technology aspect and upgrading some I T hardware and software monitoring over last year. The one thing that is not actually listed here though, that I really want to highlight is Port Hope was recognized with increasing their clearance rate to 24%. That makes us one of the second safest community in Ontario. So that is something that we haven't listed there, but that just shows the amount of work that goes through our frontline officers and our team and to provide a safe community to all. Going forwards, we have some requests or some things that were being forced for 2025 budget and that is mostly because of the new C S P A. Community Safety Policing Act is forcing us to make some changes and upgrades, which unfortunately that is impacting a little bit of our budget there. But as I'll go on, you'll see that it's being well allocated and most of it is coming from our screening department without passing on to the taxpayer levy. You'll see that we have some infrastructure maintenance to maintain and improve with our cybersecurity, hardware, software, and we're continuously working on the grant funding and building that much as much as possible from all over the province. Some of the initiatives that we have for the next year is strengthening, strengthening our relationships with community partners. Our chief has been doing a great job so far for the past year that he's been part of our service and we plan to keep that ongoing. I don't think there's an event that you won't see him there. Thanks, Chief. Obviously, increasing our visibility within the municipality, our officers are spending more time on the road, less time at the station with paperwork, and this is all because of improvements that we have made with the software and ticketing, et cetera, going on. So another such a goal that we have is optimizing our efficiency and giving what the community needs, police officers on the road and ensuring the safety across the border. So with that being said, our operator, operating budget for 2025 is going to be $7,163,445. And that's our ask from taxpayer levy for the next year. That might be a little bit different from a number that you may have received before the weekend, if you haven't had a chance to see that, but over the weekend, we were informing some small numbers that had been misallocated and evenly distributed and just to play a little bit more aligned with previous budgets, we were able to make some modifications. So that brings us to a little more of a breakdown. So altogether, we have the total expenditures for next year will be $7,464,696, or $696. And that's broken down, as you can see. We have user fees, $71,000, government grants, our team is doing an excellent job of getting as many grants as possible, raising up to $162,000. We have some other funding coming in and reimbursements, which is $67,000, so reducing our levy by 300, 300,000, a little bit over. So our levy comes down to $7,163,445. So all in all, the increase from last year that we're asking for is $451,419. That comes to a 6.7% increase compared to last year, but I want to point out that 2% of that is for the new position that we recently had to acquire for the payrolls and benefits that was passed on from the municipality. So in truthfulness, our actual ask is a 4.7 increase of 318,731. So all in all, we didn't do too bad, right? Couple of the changes, some of the money that was able to be allocated was just with the paid duty officers that we've been able to capitalize from filming, et cetera. So we had a decline of 28,000 there and then there's about 35,000 that was transferred from the screening reserve just to offset this number here. So that's kind of where that new difference came in compared to what the figures were before the weekend, okay? Going on, just to break down what that actual ask is for, the 382,000, it's 269,000 is for salaries and benefits for officers. That is just the natural progression based on their contracts. There's not much we can really do about that. Again, same thing, payroll benefits personnel, that was passed on from municipality to us. So that came in 133,000, that's including their benefits, et cetera. And then the, one of the sizable increases was the 94,000, that is for the O P P increase for policing Ward Two. So this is all included in our ask. Just to go back one sec, in the $7,163,000, that's the tax levy that we're requiring, 714,000 is targeted to O P P. So that's 10% of what that figure is going for the O P P for the next year. So again, 714, when the O P P is asking for a 94 increase, 94,000 increase, obviously we're talking about quite a sizable, I believe it was about 15% for that increase there. So that, that is what it's accounted for the 316, or 318,000 for our ask for the next And then going on, just to, just to address some of the capital budgets, our expenses that we undergo but is not passed on to the taxpayer. Police cruiser, new cruisers, we generally have been updating our cruiser almost every year by high volumes, mileage, wear and tear, et cetera. We have new tasers that were actually funded by a local organization. We had to make some improvements within the office just to be more effective within screening. And then a couple of other upgrades that were just kind of forced by the C S P A with the new, with the new act. So you can see, we're trying to use as much money that we can for the screening, at least to cover our capital budgets and try to offset as much of the costs we can to the taxpayer. Penny, any questions? I think that's my presentation.
Thank you, thank you very much. Would it be helpful for council if we just had the budget calculation up for question period or is everybody okay? Yeah, maybe we can just have that, yeah, that slide up there for, for questions, maybe I can, can you still see that, counsel? Okay. Okay, thank you very much for the very succinct presentation. I will now open it to questions and comments from around the council table. Deputy Mayor?
For the education of those of us who have never been on the Police Services Board, could you speak a little bit to the process for receiving the quote from the O P P and to what extent the Police Services Board is able to negotiate that contract on an annual basis?
This is where some assistance comes in.
I, I sit as Chair of the Police Services Board and normally I would be presenting, but, but a conflict exists here, so there is no negotiation. You take what you, you either take it or you go find an alternative service.
Did you have a follow-up, Deputy Mayor? Any other questions or comments? Yes, Counselor Autumn?
Thank you and thank you, George, for making the presentation. You did a great job. I know you were saying it's your first presentation in front of council and I think you did an incredible job. I, I think most people in municipality know that I'm a very large supporter of our Port Hope Police. I think they do a fantastic job and they keep our streets very safe. That being said, we have a very difficult decision on this budget and like every different department, they're all getting hit. So I, I had, I had a lot of opportunity to speak with, with the chief, who was very receptive and, and worked on things and it, it was really nice to see how quickly things changed after I had a couple of conversations and found a couple of things and I, I can't thank the entire group enough for the hard work that they put in. So that, that being said, when it comes to separating the two, do you, the, so the, because we separate it when we are presenting it to the taxpayers. So it's special services, so the Ward Two is doing a special service of the O P P and the Ward One is doing a special service of the Port Hope Police. So the Port Hope Police, do you know what the percentage increase just to the Port Hope Police is? Not including the, what the O P P is, 15.45 or whatever it is? Sorry for putting you out on the spot.
I can grab my phone from my chair back there and do the calculation for you.
Yeah, okay. You, you know what, I'll, I'll be nice and I'll let you know I just did the math. So I, I believe I have it at a 5.8 and that's including your increase to the, the staffing there too. So, so I guess you're minus your 2% ish off of that? So I, I just, I just thought I'd clarify that for the public too, that, you know, the, the O P P is one and then the Port Hope Police is another one and I just wanted to kind of clarify where the numbers were on that, because that's what we will be doing when we're presenting it on the budget as well.
Right.
So anyways, thank you.
Yeah, sorry I didn't have that ready available, but basically it's just the
That's okay.
7 mil minus the O P P.
Minus the 700 and, yeah, yeah.
And then compared to that.
Awesome, thank you, George, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Daryl, did you have any, anything, anything further? Counselor Les?
Well, if there's no further questions, I mean, there, there is alternatives to this funding model, but Chair, you go ahead.
I, I have a few questions before we get into the, to the alternatives. I was just wondering, George, when you were giving the, the overview at the very beginning, did that overview encompass, encompass basically policing in both wards or were you really focusing on Ward One services and data and outcomes? Just wondering for the, for the purposes of the public, just again back to what Counselor Adam was talking about.
Yep, so the 29 frontline officers, that is directly for Port Hope municipality. That would be referring that. However, I believe the 24% decrease or increase to our response, I believe that is all for Port Hope as a whole.
Okay, so I've, I've got a few other questions. One is, has there been any change in terms of approaches to government grants over the last year or so in terms of either taking a different strategy or becoming more aggressive? And the, the projected amount that you've got there, how does that compare to last year's government grants, for example? And, you know, this, this is what we ask of, of everybody, you know, what, what are the strategies to try to find alternative sources of funding? So I'm just wondering, has that number changed and have there been other strategies put in place to actually increase the resources that we might be able to realize from government grants?
Yep. To that, I, I don't have the exact figure of what the ask or the, what the grant was last year to compare, but from my experience, I do believe we have been, being more aggressive towards that and trying to gain more provincial and federal funding. Obviously, one big thing with our incident last year, that kind of forced us to be more strategic and more efficient with our spending. So I think that definitely pushed us to try to capitalize as much with different opportunities. But I do believe we have noticed an increase. Possibly our Director of Finance might be able to address that a little bit more or pass on information that I can address more.
Thank you for the question. In 2024, our budget for provincial grants was 183,000 and that's simply based on what is available and what is provided. There's usually three-year terms for each of these grants, so some of them have winded down and they aren't reignited. However, we're being very aggressive, we're applying for every single grant that we're entitled to, even if we're only given two weeks' notice to apply, we're applying for it. We have 100% success rate this year, so knock on wood, that keeps happening. We just applied for one last week, again, so we're being very aggressive with it.
So just quick follow-up, is it, is it possible that that number will shift if you continue this amazing track record of, of 100% success rate?
Yeah, so, so actuals could definitely be higher than that. There's grants that come out that we don't know about. There's three new grants that came out this year that we didn't budget for in 2024 because we didn't know about them. They come up with less than a month's notice, so it could definitely be higher than that.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Did the chief want to, please come, yes, please come up.
Alex isn't in the lobby for us, huh? But we didn't, sorry, we didn't have Alex my first year here and we just got Alex a year ago, June. So some of the grants that we're getting now are because of Alex and her teamwork with the members of the police service, for instance, the C I S O grant, Criminal Intelligence Service Ontario. That's one of our detectives and Alex. If we didn't have that position, it would be really tough to monitor, because she's responsible for all the money coming in and out. We're waiting for a mental health grant for our M Heart team and we all know the benefits of having a police officer with a social services nurse or mental health nurse and addictions nurse. So we're waiting for another grant. Right now, everybody is that's applied for it to get that program full-time. We only have that program part-time now. Huge benefits to community safety on that. So I just want to say, a lot of this is because we have a finance director who's done a great job.
Thank you, and I've just got one last question for you, George. You, you did mention the, the cyber attack that was experienced by police services over last year and given that the reserve is, is, is so essential to some of those capital expenditures and unexpected things that do come up in the course of the year, do you feel that with, with what you've presented, that there's enough room there for even more unexpected events or expenditures? Just wanting to get a, a sense of the comfort level that the, the police services have around what's in the reserve.
Yep, absolutely. Well, I think it's no knowledge that, that cyber attack definitely wasn't the best of news and I think it made a nice little welcoming gift for Chief as he was just kind of preparing and getting settled. But I, I truly believe that our screening department is doing an excellent job or has been doing an excellent job over the past year almost with rebuilding that reserve and going forward. So I think we can easily, we'll definitely be able to cover our expenses for the answering year and we're slowly rebuilding that reserve because you never know what may happen, knock on wood. But it's nice to have that reserve to cover any, any other future unexpected expenses there.
Thank you. Any other, yes, I've got, did you want to go, yeah, Deputy Mayor?
I, I have to ask the question, just given sort of the previous item on our agenda. And I know we do tend to look at percentage increases, which, which is one way of looking at it, but when you look at the actual dollar value, while it's a much smaller percentage increase because it's the largest budget and impacting the tax levy, the increase that's being asked for is the equivalent of three and a half times the increase that the library had asked for and that's discounting the O P P, which we have zero, zero pencil sharpening access to. And so I have to ask the question, if the police service board was asked to go back and sharpen their pencils a little bit more and say find $50,000, which could prevent the service cuts at the library, say, would that result in significant service change or service delivery cuts within the police service?
Thank you, Debbie, for that question there. If we just refer to the slide, we'll see what the actual breakdown of that increase is. So it is purely just salaries due to contracts and adding that payroll specialist to the team. There is, we can't reduce people's salaries, right? The only thing that personally I can see is starting to dip into the reserve to try to offset some of those expenses, but then we're just getting in that mill going forwards. When are we going to start? Are we going to continue sticking out of the reserve just to cover salaries, right? So that is just the challenge there. And looking back at it, we spent almost a million dollars in just covering the cyber attack, right? That all came out from the reserves, so I would hate for us to start dipping into that reserves in case down the road something like that happens again and we would have to pass that on to taxpayers from there. So I don't see that as an option right now.
Just, just a point of clarification around what came out of the reserves to cover off the cyber attack. If we didn't have a screening program... If we didn't have a screening program in place, where, where would that money have come from to cover the cyber attack?
That would have came from municipality.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lass?
Where we defer levy increases to the general taxpayer is in the debenture. We, we carry the cost of the building, the police station, on our books. And so that's, that's in our levy or in our budget. So that's highly unusual. I mean, it's not our asset. If we walked away, it would be the town's building. But we fund that through our, our budget. We also fund all the capital costs through our budget. The town gives us, if we need a new car, they don't buy it, we buy it out of our, our money, and which comes from screening. The screening fund in Port Hope is a non-operational fund, unless we got involved in a very large murder investigation where we really had to tap in to that money. But our friends in Coburg, they have the luxury of using some of their operational or their reserve for operational purposes. And for many, many years, I think this is the first year ever, we've allocated some of Alex's time against the reserve. And that had never happened before. So that was all being included. And there's the unfunded liability for, for those officers that are retired or going to be retired in the benefit programs. We fund that with the reserve going into the municipal reserve. So those are four differences about how we operate versus how other departments operate. Right, wrong, or different, it's the way we operate.
Did you want to add anything to that, George? Okay, any other comments from around the table? I know that Counselor Lass, you had started to talk about something on funding models. Is that covered off by your last set of comments or, okay? All right, well, so we do have, I do have one last question. And that is, in the, in the budget line here, the, the two percent that you've sort of pulled out to say, less payroll and benefits transition from MPH, can you just maybe speak to that a little bit further? Just so that the public understands why you've chosen to tease that out?
Of course. That was a new role that was passed on to us. So we felt after speaking with the CEO, that would be the, the right approach. It was something that wasn't accounted for in previous years, previous levies. So we just wanted to emphasize that that was just a new position that's being added on to our service. It, it makes sense, and it should have been something that happened many years ago. I know there was a lot of issues just regarding payroll between officers coming onto municipality and then being passed on and until they were getting paid in delays. So it didn't make sense for that person to be part of our service. But again, it was just because it is a new role, we just wanted to incorporate, to explain that two percent of the increase is dedicated specifically to that person. If the municipality wants to maintain that service, then we can remove that two percent and let the municipality town hall be responsible for it. But I think it does make sense most to have it.
Let's see, the CEO's hand has gone up. That would not be the municipality's preference. No, successful onboarding process to, to the Police Services Board and Port Hope Police Service complement. I think it's a great addition. I think it'll provide efficiencies and streamline the process. And just to be clear, the municipality provides multiple administrative functions for our boards. And we don't charge those fees back that is absorbed within the levy, whether that's accounts receivable, accounts payable, payroll specifically for police has now been transitioned out, but there's still ongoing support, communication support. All of, there's a significant number, amount of administrative support to both boards, and it doesn't get extended into committees, et cetera, that doesn't get charged back. It gets absorbed within the appropriate municipal division, whether it's finance or corporate services, those services are offered. So although it's there, it ultimately isn't an overall perfectly clear picture of exactly what it costs the municipality to have the services just because of those administrative tasks that are absorbed. But Mayor, I have one question, if I may. The services for ADP, has, has that been included in the budget, the change in payroll software? Okay, it's in there? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And I have one, one last question in the spirit of pencil sharpening. I was wondering if you could explain to the table what process the Police Services Board went through to arrive at this particular budget? Maybe just telling us where you started, where some of the cuts were made and just a process? Because obviously, it's important for us to hear what the steps were to get to this, to this place that you're presenting to us. I think it would be very helpful.
Thank you, worship, for that. And I'll definitely take all the credit because it was totally my idea how to bring it down to four point seven. I'm totally kidding. But no, we, I believe we first came in close to the eight-ish percent. But I have to give great kudos to our Director of Finance and Chief and Senior Team. They're the ones that went back and forth with their list, tried to save as much as possible there. Honestly, they made the job fairly easy for the board when presenting. I think they came, as I said, it was around the eight percent first. I know we discussed a little bit that that is a little bit high because we are definitely going in a tough year going forwards and wanted to put the best number forward. So they did a little bit more digging and basically came down to this number. So from a board perspective, they made the job very easy for us. But I have to give it all to Chief and Director of Finance and Senior Team to bring us this number.
Oh, and I see the Chief's got his hand up. So maybe if you just come up, Chief, so that everybody can hear your comments?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I'll make this really brief. Sure. So it's really important for everybody to know, as we sit down with the team, Director of Finance has numerous meetings. They start probably April first, and we continue them throughout the early summer before we bring it to the board. So every single line, two hundred lines to say, for example, if ammunition is going up, nine-millimeter ammunition, we look at that, what is the cost of that going to be? Why are we, is there any other ways to find ammunition? And it goes everything from that to hat badges. So we're constantly dealing with that before it even gets to the board. Then we sit with the board and do this whole process again. It's really important to know here, there's only, I only know of four, the inspector would know more. And I also want to say thanks because this will be the last budget for our inspector, Inspector Katie Andrews, who's here tonight. And when, when I came here, eight, twenty months ago, the screening department that we're talking about was bringing in approximately six hundred and forty thousand. She was responsible for that until we got a Director of Finance. So between the two of them and the transition over to the two of them, they've got it close to a million dollars, which is, to me, is incredible. There's only, the only other police services I know is Brockville, Coburg, Port Hope, Ganonakwa who do this, and now a First Nations Police Service. Peterborough never did it because we were afraid to do it. We should have done it. Port Hope had the courage to do it years ago and got ahead of the game. And if, it would be millions of dollars that are paid in capital. In Peterborough, that's going to the taxpayer. So that hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, as you said, Mr. Chair and your worship, all the cruisers, bulletproof vests, tasers, that's all being paid for. It was around eight hundred thousand dollars for our cyber incident that, that was paid for from that. And if there is a homicide in where I was before in Peterborough, we're responsible for it. Could be millions of dollars, someone homicide. Here, we are able to call the OPP, and we would do the beginning work, but we're able to call the OPP in for assistance. That's part of their job. Not from the detachment, but from the provincial tax base. And people lose sight of that when they see how big the OPP are. If we borrow from a person, if we have to call in help from our detachment, we could be billed for that, absolutely. Because that's the taxpayers of Ward Two and of Northumberland County who'd be paying for that, but not from the provincial piece. That could be called any police service in Ontario. They're responsible for assisting smaller police services, and that hasn't changed. So, thanks.
Thank you for that. Any last comments, questions? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion in front of us, which is to receive this for information. Can I get a mover and seconder? Moved by Counselor Daryl, seconded by Counselor Adam. Any further discussion on this? All in favor? Thank you. And that is passed. Thank you very much. Moving on to report four point three, PS sixteen twenty-four, re-amendment to Schedule K of the prescribed fees for service bylaw. Does staff have anything further they would like to add before counsel considers the report?
No, really, unless there's any questions that go along with it. Basically, it's a report to add fees to offset costs to taxpayers for our department for, you know, orders, legal fees, inspections and such. So if anybody on council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much. And it's always good to see any attempts for cost recovery for the municipality. But having said that, any questions or comments from around the table on this? Okay, seeing none. The recommended motion is to, is listed on the agenda. So can I get a mover and seconder for this? Moved by Counselor Andrew and seconded by the Deputy Mayor, all in favor? And that is passed unanimously. Moving on to report four point four, DS twenty-seven twenty-four, briefing on Fairview production, twenty twenty-four. I understand that the staff have a short presentation to accompany this report. But before we actually move forward with this report, we're going to recess for five minutes. Hey, we are ready to reconvene. So we will be moving forward with the presentation of the briefing on Fairview production, report DS twenty-seven twenty-four. So we look forward to the presentation.
Thank you, councilors. I'm going to try to go quickly because I know we have a very busy, busy schedule. So this presentation from economic development is to pull the most important points from the staff report about Fairview production and its significant impact on Port Hope. And again, I will go fairly quickly, but I welcome questions if there are any, although the staff report is, I think, fairly comprehensive. This is just going over what we will cover. So some fast facts, the Economic Development Division brought in nearly sixty thousand dollars in revenue, not including parks rentals, and collected twenty-four thousand ish on behalf of the Heritage Business Improvement Area for, for their programming and for their approvals of permits in their area. We hosted Fairview on seventeen filming dates, which is actually, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a lot for a small, relatively small community like Port Hope. Other municipalities in other areas didn't, did not host nearly that many, it was usually one or two. Apologies for insert website metrics, we'll get to those. In terms of the economic considerations, Fairview reportedly spent, so this is through their information that they provided us, reportedly spent an estimated one point five million dollars within the municipality. So that's over three hundred thousand on accommodation services and nearly one point two on location costs. And I do get questions on what is location costs. So those are, those include payments to private businesses and residents for things like driveway rentals, dressing of storefronts, things like that, parking, and that's both privately owned and municipal parking, permitting fees and vendors, and Port Hope and OPP paid-duty officer wages. So that OPP might, might be, like, might tip it a little too much. But generally speaking, that's, like, the OPP are considered, that come to Port Hope are considered local spend. This figure does not include the crew and cast spending their dollars and per diems on Port Hope, and that happens a lot in, during non-filming days when there isn't craft or catering services that are brought in. And it also does not touch on the substantial tourism revenue that is generated by filming activities and the cultural kind of event that it creates when it comes to Port Hope and afterwards. For community and cultural considerations, downtown on rural businesses alike were generally very positive when, when asked for feedback and were very appreciative of the opportunity that Fairview presented for them. There were certainly some business owners and residents that expressed their concern and even frustration with the additional disruption that filming created, particularly to the downtown, of course. In, in the wake of Wall Street reconstruction, it felt like compounding impacts. On the other hand, there, there were some businesses and businesses and operators who claimed that the revenue from Fairview was a lifeline for them in twenty twenty-four, given the challenges that were presented with reconstruction, inevitable challenges that were presented during reconstruction. And I'm going to, I don't want to bore you with too many graphs, so I am going to skim through these quickly. But I wanted to kind of illustrate that our, they're all generally saying the same thing, which is that our online audience is really engaged with content related to filming. And that's, and both filming and the IT franchise, whenever we speak about it and our relationship to it. So we can see spikes in webpage activity on starring Port Hope on filming dates between January and July. So we, I didn't kind of outline them there, but those spikes are during filming happening in Port Hope. This next slide here is demonstrating, just kind of top level, how generally posts about, about filming perform really well and tend to be in the top, or are in the top five performing posts. You can see the likes and reactions is a very liked post, the most liked post in, in the first half of twenty twenty-four, and it was about dressing in downtown. Again, you're seeing that, that spike in activity with the IT walking tour. That's an online brochure that is our most, our best performing brochure, our best performing PDF. And here we have just the metrics that indicate where that traffic is coming from. And you can see that, that the most traffic is coming from Toronto and then Port Hope and then places like Montreal, London, Ottawa. So the, the, the activity is from all over the area and even beyond. And again, I'm going to be feeding a fed horse at this point, but you can see here, the top performing posts continue to be about filming and Fairview. So I'm going to skip through these to not bore us. This one is actually, this one's cool because it's happened, it was a spooky post by tourism. So it happened in October, and it's far and away the most, the best performing post that we have on our tourism channel. All right, moving on to political considerations. I think it's important to highlight that, the political implications of filming. So our partners with the provincial government are very keen on deepening their investments and are committed to deepening their investments into the filming industry in the province. And they're committed to remaining competitive internationally as a filming market. And so leading into those investments is a valid economic strategy for the municipality, but also a valid, a valid political one to remain, remain true to kind of the provincial mandates that are, that are set for the, the economic ministries. And finally, organizational considerations. All this said, all of this kind of pumping up of filming, it's important for council and the community to know that filming can be very challenging for the municipality as an organization and, of course, to the residents and businesses for a number of reasons, which are outlined in more detail in the staff report. And the next step in the conversation, according to staff with economic development, will be to explore the possibility of creating a new filming policy to help smooth out those challenges and to accommodate the emerging needs of our businesses and residents. And that's all for me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you very much for, for the really thorough report and the presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to council members for, for questions and comments about this. See, Counselor Adam?
Thank you. So I just want to thank you for this incredible report. I kind of wish that Todd was here because the metrics are just perfect for, for somebody like Todd. I've had a lot of opportunity to work with the different filming crews, having a business downtown. And it's, for me personally, I also understand that there's, it's not the same for every business. But for me personally, it has been nothing but incredible. And I have seen that long-term where the IT walking tour, I always have some pamphlets in the store and they go every single day. People are taking them every single day, including today. I found another stack today, I put them out, and within like three or four minutes- I found another stack today, I put them out and within like three or four minutes, somebody had already taken one. So I really appreciate all the hard work. So thank you.
Thank you. And I just also want to echo, I know how hard the teamwork during, during that filming. It's very much appreciated by the, by the community. And I've got a couple of questions. One is, what, what would you say are the top two or three lessons learned from this round of hosting? The second question is, is there in fact going to be an imminent review of the policy? And what implications do you think that a new policy might have in terms of moving, moving forward in this, in this way? And then finally, is there an opportunity to really build upon the tourism that we already know is attracted by this kind of filming heritage in our community? To even go from strength to strength on that?
I, I was going to say, I would defer to this CEO White at first, but I can certainly supplement as needed.
Meg is definitely the expert when it comes to probably lessons learned with the filming experience of this past season. I will just jump in to say that the filming policy review is expected to be, to commence and be completed in two thousand and twenty-five. It has been deferred. Meg has prepared a draft staff report and it has been initiated and it has been paused for the onboarding of the new director to ensure that the proper oversight and direction is given, to ensure that they have the resources to take that on. So that's where we're at with the policy. So stay tuned. It's very important to have that in place prior to potential another round of filming in two thousand and twenty-six, if it comes back for season two in two thousand and twenty-six. And outside of that, when it comes to lessons learned, I mean, there's lessons learned across all the departments. So Meg can speak to, I think, economic development. But you'll see when the staff report comes forward that there is opportunities and challenges when it comes to filming in all divisions, for the most part, across the corporation.
Thank you, CEO White, and I think I see through the mayor or through CEO White. To answer your question about lessons learned, I think the biggest lesson that we learned, and it's a positive one, was working closely with the heritage business improvement area really changed the way that filming is addressed in the downtown area. It, we were able to work closely with a liaison that was, that was a dedicated chair member of the HBIA. And as a result, the voice of the downtown community was able to be really kind of concentrated and channeled through that liaison. And I know from, from my perspective and Andrew's perspective, working closely with them was absolutely crucial. That said, there's, there's plenty more that can be done to make sure that businesses, impacted businesses have a, a strong voice. But I do believe, we do believe that the policy of making sure that the heritage business improvement area is an approver on all downtown, all downtown filming. I, that's a really important piece of our, of our policy. So that was, that'd be my first, our first lesson. And then the second lesson would be a, an ongoing, that ongoing conversation as to the importance of filming, but also the impact of filming is necessary. There is a strong resistance to disruption, depending on who you speak to. And there's also a strong support for filming, depending on who you speak to. And so having ongoing conversations and making sure that people have their concerns, feel that their concerns can be brought forward and addressed or certainly at least accommodated to the best of the municipality's ability. I think that's the other big lesson to, to kind of really reinforce. And this, for, in, in the case of Fairview, it was a particularly challenging experience for folks, not just because of downtown reconstruction, but the scale of this production. It's, it was the largest we'd ever seen. It dwarfed the, the movies by far because there was an entire TV series to shoot and they took up seventeen shooting days. It's massive. So, and that kind of leads into my third one, which would be welcoming very large productions is a huge commitment and a huge impact. And if Port Hope wants to continue to have the kind of cachet that these kinds of large productions offer, there, there is a, there is a equal, almost equal cost. And so really being strategic when we explore the reworking of the policy as to what's realistic, I think, is going to be the, the primary goal of, of future policy work. Did that, did CEO White and myself answer all the questions, Mayor?
Thank you. Those first two were answered beautifully. Just the last question is whether or not there's tourism opportunities that haven't yet quite been fully explored.
Hundred percent.
Good news. Deputy Mayor.
Apologies if I missed it. It's a very thorough report. Could you comment on, you've mentioned the potential that they would be filming a season two. Are we committed to that, having hosted for season one? No.
Okay. Through CEO White, I mean, she would have been the person that spoke with the highest uppest of Fairview.
Highest uppest? Yes. So having, no. We are not fully committed. Obviously, if the series is successful and the production company would like to continue continuity in scenes and sets, et cetera, is obviously very important to the filming company. That said, they need to ensure that it's a willing host community. And because that willingness obviously translates into ease of production days. And fundamentally, I would say that our internal processes, we haven't fully decided. I would say from a process perspective, if we've bought into filming and bought out or bought out. And what I mean by that is, you know, being able to quickly, production crews and directors, you know, they're creative, they're visual, they see scene shots based on, you know, in the moment. And then they, but we issue permits based on application, not creative at all. So just aligning and being willing to pivot and be flexible with our processes and approach is something that we're going to have to consider. And the impact of that pivot could potentially impact whether it be the business community, residential owners, municipal operations, PHI, all of the different things. Next phase of Walton, all of the things that are coming into play. So all of those factors have to be brought in during the policy work conversation to determine as a community, are we opting in, because it isn't as simple as opting in to just do a rerun of what we experienced this year. The expectation would be for that policy work to force the community and council to make a decision if we are opting in to reframe it and then ensure if we are opting in, that it's resourced appropriately to ensure that it can be conducted and we're represented well and that we are making a good name for ourselves in the Ontario film industry.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Really informative, great background. We look forward to more information to come in the future. So the recommended motion is to receive this for information. Can I get a mover and secondor? Moved by councillor Daryl, seconded by councillor Adam, all in favour. And that is passed unanimously. Moving on to report four point five. Report DS twenty-nine twenty-four, re-potential attainable housing development on forty-one Young Street, community engagement. Does staff have anything further to add before council considers the report?
No, I think the report outlines all considerations well. I'll just provide some high level background on the, on the initiative. We are within the preliminary stages of preparing an open house presentation for the public. An official plan amendment, zoning bylaw amendment will be, will be required to permit any sort of residential development on the subject property. These applications would require council approval. The planning process will incorporate a fulsome public engagement plan to shape the potential development. And are there any questions, comments on the initiative? Happy to address them.
Thank you for, thank you for that, for the comments. Thank you for the report. Any questions or comments from around the council table on this? Okay, well then, the, the recommended action is listed on the agenda. Can I get a mover and secondor for that? Moved by councillor Les, seconded by, sorry? Didn't get the hand up. Deputy Mayor, yes, all in favour or any further discussion, all in favour? Okay, and that is passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to report four point six. DS twenty-eight twenty-four, re-community improvement plan, two thousand and twenty-three update. Does staff have anything further to add before the council considers the report?
No, there's nothing to add. We believe everything is in the report, but certainly open to any questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions regarding this report? Deputy Mayor.
Sort of, sort of. I, I did speak with Mr. Wallin earlier today. I did have had some questions answered, just to make sure that I had the proper understanding of the brownfield tax assistance portion of the CIP. So I don't have any questions, more just a, I don't know. A concern, I guess, about the, this is, I think, the first time we're really being asked to do something with the CIP in this term of council. And so my, my feeling is, I'm not sure that I fully understand. I'm versed, I'm well enough versed in the CIP as a whole to sort of understand the request around the ten years versus the three years. So the CIP does stipulate three years. That is the provision that was approved in the CIP. My assumption is, is that that was vetted. There were, there was a rationale for why three years was selected, why that was approved as part of the CIP. And without having that background information, I'm not sure that I have the capacity to make a decision to override that decision that was made and approved by the previous council in this particular case. And I'm not sure if that's something that is common to do on a case by case basis when there is a CIP in place. So maybe it is a question if you could answer whether that is common or if the CAO has any experience with CIPs that could be helpful. Sorry, it's not super clear.
I, I thank you for that question. I'm, I'm not sure who wants to tackle this. Okay, CAO?
So essentially, the, the CIP process is governed under an act and that process entails public engagement, council, political will of the day and essentially what the intent of the program was when it was established. That said, not all cases fit neatly in a box. And it's hard to predict all economic development opportunities that are going to be presented in a municipality or in a community, specifically in a downtown area. And it is, I wouldn't say overly common, because to be honest, uptake on a CIP in its entirety really hasn't seen provincially what its intent was since it actually came to be, to be straight out honest with you. There, it seems to be that forgotten child, so to speak. So fundamentally, there's not a huge uptake across the board. So no, there's not, you know, a huge long lineup of when, you know, a council would be presented with an opportunity to, you know, deviate from its particular policy. That said, it's not unheard of either. I don't know if that's helpful to you. But essentially, you know, it's an economic development opportunity within the downtown and not always are those opportunities to be, ability to be foreshadowed.
I'm gonna, yes, go, yes, please, please go ahead.
A little bit to that. First of all, the initial CIP was implemented in two thousand and eighteen. Some of, some of that historical reference is a little harder to find. There is verbiage in our CIP and other CIPs that refer to a transformative project. And that starts to open up the interpretation of what that truly means. And I think that varies from community to community. And so part of that ask as far as why go beyond the three years is relative to the investment that has been made at this point and also the nature of what the plans are going forward for the, for the property.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you for that. And I think the, the report obviously clearly outlines the rationale from like the cost perspective. I completely appreciate that. Not sure that I have a good sense of what the proposed future use of that site is. So maybe I'm missing a little bit of that context as well. But the other question I have is about precedent. So if we were to, to approve for ten years as opposed to the three that's stipulated in the CIP, would we therefore be expected to do the same should a future request come in? I, I do note, I did look at the map and I did note some other significant brownfield site, at least one, that does lie within that CIP area. I have no idea what that might look like if the request came forward or what the dollar value would be of that request relative to this one. I'm just wondering if we would be, yeah, establishing a precedent that we would be held to in the, in future requests.
I mean, I see the CAO's got her hand up.
Every decision that's made can essentially be setting a precedent because a future applicant can draw attention to a previous decision. That said, you're not bound by it, no. You have the opportunity to make the appropriate decision based on the case and the information that's presented to council of the day. When it comes to the financial implications of other brownfield properties within the current CIP area, making a similar request based on the, the annual allocation given to the CIP program against the uptake. There, if the additional brownfield property within the CIP area came forward with the same request, there would still be enough funding under the envelope to be able to consider it. That said, it's taken on a case by case basis, first come, first served a lot of times, depending on how they come forward and how much money is left within that funding envelope. There, I don't think there's enough brownfields in the CIP area that would completely somewhat upend the entire CIP program where we'd be looking at, well, we make this decision, you'd have to be doubling or tripling that envelope on an annual basis. I don't, I definitely don't foresee that.
Thank you for that additional information. The recommended motion for this is listed on the agenda. Can I get a mover and secondor? Moved by councillor Andrew and seconded by councillor Adam, all in favour. And that is passed. Thank you. Moving on to report four point seven. CS fifteen, two thousand and twenty-four, re-declare former George Hamilton Public considers this report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hankiewski. It's a long report. I'll try to keep my comments brief. The report before you tonight recommends the sale, the surplus and sale of the former George Hamilton Public School. Property was purchased in two thousand and twenty-one for economic development, future purposes that have not materialized. Property now poses a financial strain on the municipality. As an unfunded asset, the property incurs ongoing costs without generating revenue and having never had a funding source identified. Declaring its surplus allows us to prioritize its sale and ease this financial burden. It's my understanding that this is the direction council has expected for some time now. Notably within the report, since two thousand and twenty-two, the Port Hope Police Service has used the property rent-free for training and supporting local public safety initiatives. They are aware of the potential sale and are exploring alternatives. Staff are recommending tonight an open market sale with the utilization of a Realtor to target a sale price of a minimum of five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. This approach maximizes the return and allows for flexible future use. To be clear, until we receive your direction and engage with the Realtor, the sale price of the property and how it's marketed has not been determined. So in summary, this report seeks councils' support to declare the property surplus and initiate a clear sale process. And I'm very happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Gilmore. I have a, just an immediate question and that's around the, the burden on the municipality and the, the costs that is hoping to be realized. If, if the sale did come in at, say, the five hundred Um, if if the sale did come in at, say, the five hundred ninety thousand dollars, would that offset the original investment plus the operating costs on that property since it was actually purchased by the municipality?
Thank you for that question. Uh, it would not offset the operating costs that have gone into maintaining that property in a vacant state since its purchase. It would offset, um, the cost of the initial acquisition.
Thank you. Uh, would you be able to clarify what costs would need to be realized in order to come out cost neutral?
Uh, I think we've averaged just under or between twenty two and twenty five thousand dollars a year since purchase uh, on general operations. That's not taking into account, um, that's not taking into account staff time or the resources to support that. Um, so, I mean, the quick math there is an additional seventy thousand dollars on top of the original purchase price. So that's why, just to be clear, we're not recommending we market the, the, the property at five hundred ninety thousand dollars. We're identifying that as a bare minimum that's in line with our surplus and sale bylaw and represents the current appraised value. It's notable that the current appraised value we were provided, uh, it was provided in a range. So it's actually five hundred ninety to six hundred and sixty thousand dollars appraised value today.
Thank you very much. Um, questions, comments? Deputy Mayor?
I I appreciate that this, that probably some of the discussions, at least around the purchase of this property, did happen in closed session. So you might be limited on how on, in your ability to answer my question. But I was wondering if you are able to speak a little bit more around what were the potential opportunities that the council of the day saw that caused them to purchase the property um, that didn't materialize? And, uh, beyond that, if there's any other lessons learned here, uh, for this council and future such decisions?
Um, I I can speak to the the general nature per your your comments. There were certainly closed session considerations, but uh, in December twenty twenty, around the original consideration of the opportunity, uh, a public report was provided by the the former director of, uh, what we called Community Development at the time. That was accompanied by, if not an attachment, I believe, a presentation by some interested parties regarding the agricultural venture center opportunity. So the consideration, while it was a high level concept, uh, the plan and the sort of partners that were willing to look at the opportunity, were considered publicly by council at that time. So I I didn't, I mean, it's a seven-page report and it's not a financial deep dive or a a deep dive on the history. I didn't attach that material, but, um, it is all publicly available. I think it was the December first twenty twenty meeting of the Committee of Hope.
Thank you, Director Gilmore. Um, any other questions or comments from council? So the the recommended action is listed on the agenda. Uh, can I get a mover and seconder for that? Moved by Counselor Les, seconded by Counselor Adam, all in favor? And that is passed. Thank you. Moving on to item number five, notice of motions, five point one notice of motion regarding development of a county-led encampment management plan. This motion was placed on the November fifth twenty twenty four council agenda to provide notice to the public. It's moved by Deputy, uh, uh, Mayor Holloway Wadwani and seconded by Counselor Attridge, who's not here today. So, um, we will need a seconder to consider this item, but as I understand it, the Deputy Mayor would like to speak to this item before we proceed any further.
Uh, yeah, uh, I actually would like to ask council to defer this, uh, notice of motion to the council meeting on November twenty sixth at such a point where, uh, Counselor Todd is also present at the table and able to speak to the motion.
So you'll have to put a motion on the table, I believe, for that. So is that, is that your motion then?
My motion is that council defer this, uh, this notice of motion to the council meeting on November twenty sixth.
And we have a seconder or, uh, did you want to second that? Yeah, or? Okay, I think we need a a seconder or two in order to put this. Okay, Counselor, uh, Daryl has seconded it. Now you can speak to it.
Yeah, do you not, in your capacity as, uh, the deputy warden, um, are you not covering these points, outlining this notice of motion anyways, as wrote?
Uh, thank you for that question, um, Counselor, um. Les, uh, I can, I can certainly speak to my own personal action.
Uh, uh, there's a motion to defer discussion of the notice of motion, so I don't think that questions around the notice of motion are in order.
So, uh, Madam Mayor, as there is a deferral motion on the floor currently, uh, discussion would have to be around that motion.
I I was actually trying to finish my, uh, comment that I would be happy to provide information from my, uh, from my chair, from my activities at the county level, but we're not actually discussing it. Um, so, uh, but thank you for the clarification. And, uh, so we've got a first, a mover and seconder for that. Um, did you want to speak to the deferral? Yes, please, Counselor Adam.
Thank you. Um, I don't really understand why we would need to defer this. We're just kind of sending this off, uh, for you to bring it forward. I don't think we really even need to speak to it too much. I don't know why we would need to defer it until somebody else is here.
Uh, Deputy Mayor.
Um, well, I can speak to to my rationale for wanting to defer it is, um, generally, you know, I know that Counselor Todd, uh, was part of putting this together um, in discussion with me, but also through the intermunicipal task force. Um, and our timing of bringing it forward was, you know, uh, this week was after the Thursday homelessness one-on-one training that was offered to municipal counselors. And I noted that not all of us from this council table were able to attend. So it struck me that it might be helpful to have a second person who has that fulsome information at the table to be able to share that with, uh, council, uh, prior to voting on this matter.
Any other, uh, yes, Counselor Adam?
Um, just to that, um, noting what the, uh, what the motion is, uh, for developing a county-led encampment management, wouldn't, um, taking more time, pushing this back by a few weeks, wouldn't that actually be a bad thing for us and not a good thing?
Uh, can, uh, yes, um. Deputy Mayor.
Sorry, I wait to be called on. Uh, I agree. Um, I guess I'm hedging a little bit because in my view, uh, failure to pass this motion would be a, uh, greater setback, um, around this topic, given the temperature.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And it it wouldn't be the first time that we've deferred a motion that didn't have a member of council that had been involved in the, in the shaping of it and bringing it forward to the table. So we have the motion on on the table. We've had a seconder. Any further discussion? I'm gonna take the vote. All in favor? And, uh, that is passed. Okay. Moving on then to updates and new business, I'm I'm gonna actually start with, uh, a a question to our our staff, and that is, um, would we be able to get an update on Walton Street?
Sure. Um, well, um, as you know, the first two lifts of Ashwalt have been, um, applied to phase two of Walton Street, which is fantastic. We are currently on pace, I believe sidewalks commenced. They were, they worked on Saturday, they paved yesterday, the sidewalk work commenced today. Um, we are definitely trending towards our, um, original commitment of having the, um, to, to, motorist traffic and pedestrian traffic open in the month of November. So definitely trending in that way. Um, so the Candlelight Festival, the Santa Claus Parade, there's going to be some excitement around those initiatives at the end of the month. Um, the construction is not going to impede those wonderful activities that are um, traditionally annually planned for the community, and we're teeing up for a fabulous holiday season for the business community. Um, staff are are really pleased with the ongoing progress of of the project. There's been lots of pivots and divots and changes in trajectory, including even this morning, but ultimately, we've been able to pull a few rabbits out of the hat, and things are continuing to trend in the right direction.
Uh, thank you for that. And just one follow up, um, will there be any specific event marking the the completion of this phase of Walton Street?
The easy and simple answer is, is no. Um, that said, um, a couple of reminders. One, this is phase two of three phases. So the timing, the same resources that go into planning an event are the same resources that continue to ensure that Walton Street is open on time for the holiday season, as well as the Candlelight Festival, the Santa Claus Parade. So we are capitalizing on those already, um, wonderful events. So the, uh, Midnight Madness, there will be cake, because I don't know if you remember at the beginning of the project, we said it is going to be messy, but there will be cake. So we are coming good on that promise. Um, so we'll be, um, the Communications Division will be reaching out to council to ensure that, um, you have an opportunity to greet, uh, those that are attending the the festival and and chat all things Walton and all things wonderful. Um, so essentially, no specific, um, event. That said, there is a budget that's being allocated through a a grant that was received for twenty twenty five. So there will be, at the end of all of the phases, um, assuming that Phase Three moves forward in the budget for twenty twenty five, that there will be a huge celebration at the very end when the final impact of all phases have been realized. So essentially, Candlelight Festival, Midnight Madness, Moonlight Madness, Midnight Madness, anyway, here nor there. The the madness at midnight, um, essentially is, uh, going to be, um, the highlight and the focus. So you can, I think it's going to be a great celebration, all in all.
Thank you for that update. And I'm going to move on to an update on the court proceedings concerning sixty five Ward Street. Last week, the municipality issued a public notice regarding an update on the court proceedings for the matter related to sixty five Ward Street. In the update, we noted that there have been some provincial legislation changes to the rules of civil procedure. Now, motions for leave to appeal from tribunal decisions must be reviewed in writing by a panel of the court only with no in-person hearing. Both the municipality and the property owner, Southbridge Care Homes, have submitted their arguments with a written hearing scheduled for the week of December the ninth, twenty twenty four. The municipality will update the public once the court issues a decision. And as I understand it, that's not going to happen realistically before the end of the year, in case folks were wondering. And to read the full public notice, which includes background information on sixty five Ward Street file, visit porthope.ca forward slash news. Uh, I also want to just give an update on our, um, uh, flag policies in regards to Remembrance Day. Uh, I just wanted to share with you that the flag atop of Town Hall is only lowered if there is a death of a member of the royal family. It is lowered at the time of death, uh, right through to the funeral. That is the only time that the flag on top of Town Hall is lowered. There were some questions around it in regards to Remembrance Day, so I just wanted to clarify. And that is historic practice of the municipality of Port Hope. Do council members have any updates or new business that they would like to share? Seeing none, we'll move on to question period. It's now time for question period. Remember, the purpose of question period is to make inquiries of council related to matters of municipal business. It's not meant to be an avenue to ask questions to staff. If you have questions specifically to council members, you can ask them now. And just also want to highlight, if the questions are operational in nature, they are probably best answered by a member of staff following the meeting. And if that staff member is is not here, we will certainly take all of the contact information required and get back to you with a very fulsome and accurate, uh, response. So if you do have a questions, please step up to the podium, uh, turn on the purple button there and state your name and address, please. But before we get there, are there any questions from council members, uh, around the table? Okay, seeing now, uh, we don't have any questions from from the media. Hope that changes sometime in the future. Uh, so now we'll take questions, um, from the public, please.
Jim Skullthorpe, sixteen eighty-five Willow Beach Road. We had a discussion tonight about, um, filming in Port Hope, which was very positive. Um, as we all know, Port Hope is a unique town with unique architecture. And I believe that's why we have so many requests for filming in Port Hope. It costs a lot to maintain those buildings, and I'm wondering if council could ask for a small fee to be paid into the, um, Porto Heritage District for maintaining those buildings. I know that you already provide funding through the heritage grants, but this might be a way to show the property owners that are in that heritage district that here's a little more because you are, um, giving up the opportunity for business sometimes and and just, here's a little extra money to help you with your buildings. So I would ask council if they could consider this.
Thank you very much for that question. And as you heard tonight, there is going to be a revamping of the entire film policy. And so we will, we'll make note of of your question and your request. Uh, staff is here. They they've heard the question. And so, uh, I'm sure we will have an opportunity to explore it further when we get the staff report about the new policy.
Thank you. That's what I was hoping. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Ed White, uh, Mill Street, Port Hope. Wow, great minds think alike. Um, one point seven or one point five million dollars brought into the town by the the filming, like, let that number set in there, and I just wonder if anything else in the town comes close to bringing that much money in for a couple of weeks or a month of, uh, of, uh, uproar, if you want to call it. I, if I could just say one little thing here, we've been talking, different people have been talking, and to ride the coattails of the horror type industry, okay, they talked about how how, uh, valuable the, uh, walk was and how how tourism comes in, um, uh, on the, on the tails of of it and whatnot. Uh, Port Hope has been a long time, um, kind of a horror center of, uh, of, there was film, okay. I, what do I mean by that? I I mean, I mean, there was events in the past where people dressed up in costumes and and there was, uh, horror movies that could go at the Capitol Theater, like.
And is this segueing into a question?
Into my question, yeah. What are you gonna do about it? Okay, we got, we got all kinds of, all kinds of things for, uh, for filming. And and like I said, one point five million dollars, that's a lot of money. How can we benefit from that?
Uh, thank you very much for for both that, the the two questions, as I heard them. Uh, I think one thing that, you know, staff can probably consider in its report too, when it comes back with the new film policy is to actually come up with some comparable metrics of how the one point five million compares to other, as you said, events or opportunities that the community sees. And and I do think that the question was asked, or just, if I can finish, uh, the question was, uh, already asked about how we can better capitalize on the tourism opportunities linked to that. And I believe that that's something that staff is going to be taking forward as well.
Well, we have lots of cultural events and things like that. Well, we have lots of cultural events and things like that. I'm just wondering if we could do something with with that as well.
The the staff did answer the affirmative, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those questions. Any other questions from our audience this evening? If you'd like to just step up, please?
How's it going? My name's Ben. First time I've been to one of these meetings.
Hi, hi, Ben. If if you can just first and last name and address, please.
Lundergan, 44 Young Street. Basically asking about the development plans for 41 going forward. I know it's preliminary, but I was reading, what, 25,000 to 30,000 has been committed to public engagement through Weston Consulting. Seems like there's a direction for it already. Key word, trigger word that's been used, especially with the federal government with, sorry, trying to fix the housing crisis and whatnot in Canada. I'm trying to find the definition of attainable housing because that seems to be a standard that nobody actually knows.
That's a really good question. Certainly, there's a lot of discussions about what's affordable and what's attainable in terms of general definitions. And then, of course, those definitions differ when you look at different communities. And so it's going to be different for Northumberland County than it would be for other jurisdictions around Ontario. Thus far, we've tended to look to the county to provide direction on what is affordable and attainable. But to be quite honest, the the definition does change. It often relates to market prices of of housing as well. But attainable is is typically at a at a higher threshold than affordable or deeply affordable in the broadest kinds of strokes. And so I'm assuming that as we go through our community consultation, that we'll be able to share more precise information about what the potential plans are. This is the very preliminary step. And I think that you bringing forward this question is an excellent opportunity for us during those community engagement processes to be able to provide some of that information to the community.
Yeah, yeah, because stuff like private sector and then the municipal running of the area as well is like our big touch points that, you know, will have implications on people who live on the street, surrounding areas. It's a connecting street to Hope in Ontario. I'm assuming nobody have no familiar faces here for me. So you probably don't see the traffic coming through there, especially with the construction we've been having for the last year through the Radon program. Like, I get it. I work at OPG. I I understand what's going on over there. But, yeah, what's what's coming and potentially going to happen scares the hell out of me. And, yeah, with with no answers comes a lot of imagination, so.
Of course. And and I think that's, and I really appreciate you coming forward because that's really what a community engagement process is really intending to do is to have those conversations, to talk about what are the potential uses, what timelines might be, and to answer those questions you had tonight about attainable and affordable. I think I think a lot of the public would probably be quite shocked to know how high the threshold is for what we would consider to be the income that somebody would need in our community that would then also ensure that they are food secure. It's in the 60 odd thousands of dollars. And that is not something that most people are are aware of. So I think it's a great opportunity too to talk about what it is that that folks need to live in this community, especially around housing, to be food secure and to be house secure. And it's it's an opportunity for those conversations.
Yeah, because the CMHC, I think, has a standard for affordable housing, and that's 30% of somebody's income before taxes. But affordable and attainable, they fall under different jurisdictions.
Yes, correct. And and as I said, the, you know, different jurisdictions also have taken on different approaches to these things. But we'll have an opportunity for more fulsome discussion around that.
Okay.
Thank you for coming with that question. And we we hope to see you at the community engagement. Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay. Thank you. We are now moving on to item number eight, adjournment. This concludes our business to be covered on today's agenda. And I'm in a position to adjourn the meeting at 8:34 PM. Thank you.